Calling the 1 o'clock PM Health and Human Services Committee hearing. 1 PM calendar. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Friday, 1 PM, on February 7 in room 225. For those on Zoom, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Each testifier will have one minute to testify, except for the three Deaf Blind Task Force bills, because we need to speak slower because of the ALS interpreter. Those bills, the testifiers for those three bills, and I will mention them, will have two minutes each. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. The bills SB 1419, SB 1494, and SB 1495 will be taken out of order to accommodate the ASL interpreter and Deaf Blind Task Force members. I will be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislators' website. You will find a link on the status page for the measure. First up would be SB 1419 relating to Act 253, Section 11 of Hawaii 2023. First up, we have Department of Human Services in support.
My name is Lea Diaz. I am the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation Administrator, and I have with me Gavin Abe, the Ho'opono Services for the Blind Branch Administrator. We are here on behalf of Director Ryan Yamane, and we stand on our written testimony as submitted.
Thank you very much.
Here for any questions. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Katie Kime for National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii in support.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Oops. Very close to your table. Chair and co-chair, thank you for hearing my testimony today. My name is Katie Kime. I'm the second Vice President of the National Federation of the Blind and represent our organization today. We are in support of the amendments made by the Department of Human Services, and a point that was made in our testimony that I'd like to bring to your attention is that the term "low vision" is the appropriate term, unlike visually impaired, which becomes a disrespectful regard to the individuals. Our national organization has a resolution and policy for all organizations for blind people in this country and government entities to use the term "low vision." So we highly applaud the Department of Human Services for the amendment and the establishment of a timeline for this program. Thank you for your time today. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else wishing to testify? SB 1419. Seeing none, since I'm the only person, there won't be any questions, and we are going to be moving on. Next up, SB 1494, out of order, relating to hearing aids. First up, Insurance Division, State of Hawaii, DCCA, providing comments. Next up is Office of the Auditor providing comments. Next up, we have Eleanor McDonald in support. Don Carissu for HMSA providing comments. Peter Fritz in support. Peter, are you present on Zoom?
He is present on Zoom, Chair.
Please proceed.
I'm in support of this bill. I've been involved with this bill since it was first introduced by Francine Y. and Debbie Jackson of DCAB. And as my testimony, I'm making a suggestion about changing the definition of hearing aid to be prescription hearing aids, because those are prescribed by a medical professional, whereas over-the-counter hearing aid can be purchased in a convenience store almost and do not have the same type of supervision that they have. My testimony also includes recent reports that show that hearing aids can reduce the incidence of or the onset of dementia, because it keeps people socially active and involved. I have copies of those reports if you would like. So there's definitely a potential to reduce the health cost incurred by a health insurance plan. Another thing that happens when people get hearing aids is their accident rate goes down, the admission to emergency rooms goes down, simply because people are no longer surprised when somebody sneaks up on them or comes up from them, and they don't hear that person and are surprised. There are benefits beyond just hearing aids. There's a total health benefit to the state of Hawaii. And as one report said, it's probably the most effective cost procedure that can reduce the incidence of dementia. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Next up, we have Sheri Shimizu in support. Next, we have Stephanie LaRacuenta in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1494? Come on up, Rick. Identify yourself.
Thank you, Senator and Committee. I am Rick Tabor. I'm actually Vice Chair for the Pabia Legislative Committee, but I'm going to speak, we're going to support that, and I'm in strong support. I'm going to speak on my behalf, as I had for the last, what, six, seven years? Yeah, I'll be brief. My mother died February 7. She fell, broke her neck, broke her cravicle. We found her, my brothers found her hearing aid hidden under the fish aquarium in her room. Falls from not wearing hearing aids are huge. I concur with everything that Mr. Fritz just shared around health issues. I would bring up that I know a couple of years ago, Insurance Commissioner said that premiums would skyrocket if we passed this bill. Premiums have skyrocketed because of the health issues, the mental health issues, the dementia issues. My mother's life was hell, dealing with dementia and not having hearing. It's worse than that, though. Kids are born without hearing. They don't even know that they have hearing issues. We need to be checking this. We need to be covering it. Last point. My cousin, who was head pharmacist at Queen for 30 years, said to me about a year ago at his birthday party, "Rick, I never listened to you when you were talking about this. I just got hearing aids. It cost me $10,000. My insurance covered 100 of it."
Thank you.
It's not adequately covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify? Come on up on SB 1494.
Good morning, Chair and Committee members. My name is Elizabeth Pearson. I am with the Disability and Communication Access Board, testifying on behalf of our Executive Director Kirby Shaw. We are in support of this measure, and we also wanted to add the sentiment of specifying the language defining hearing aids as prescription hearing aids, so that the measure is adequately covering. So yeah, if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1494?
Chair, are you a GCPA or a GCPA?
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1494? Okay, thank you. Members, we have new members. We have Vice Chair Senator Kino, we have Senator Hashimoto, and we have Senator Cumbella here. Members, any questions on SB 1494?
Senator R. O. M. Schmitz.
Okay. So they have written testimonies that they are standing on.
We're offering comments on the addition of essential health benefits, benefits in addition to the essential health benefits, that it's unclear whether these amendments would be subject to state deframment. Then we also did comment on the need for a state auditor study, which I believe was also discussing the preamble of the measure.
Do you think that this is going to skyrocket the cost by implementing something like this?
We did review the state auditor study for 2014, which I believe does say that most health instruments does cover it, just to maybe a differing degree of coverage level. And there was other comments about, you know, maybe the repair and the replacement costs being covered, and that's not addressed in this particular measure.
So just a quick, sorry. So you don't like hearing aid? I know that, because it costs a lot of money. So the thing broke. If you don't have coverage for insurance, or the patient don't have coverage for insurance, they only get one hearing aid. The other one broke. So there's any stipulation that when a consumer goes to whoever's selling the product, whatever can provide some kind of coverage within the plan? Or, you know, like glasses, when I go buy my own glasses, my glass broke a certain time, I get one replacement. Do they have something like that that we could think about in somebody like this?
It may be dependent on the type of coverage per plan, but I believe the study in 2014 did reflect that many of the plans do cover health hearing aids. It's just a matter of the coverage level.
Okay, so Senator Cumbella, there was an attempt at sunrise analysis in 2022, but the auditor stopped the sunrise analysis because Senator Moriwaki and the Kukuna Caucus wrote him a letter saying it was unnecessary and basically against our resolution requiring him to do it. So that is what we are faced with today, was an incomplete sunrise analysis. And that's the reason why the Insurance Commissioner is stating what it's stating.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Moving on, so the last DBTF bill, Deaf Blind Task Force bill, that we are taking out of order is FB 1495. Okay, FB 1495 again is relating to hearing aids. It exempts from the general excise tax gross receipts regarding hearing aids. First up, we have Deputy Attorney General providing comments.
My name is Haley Callahan. I am the Deputy Attorney General from the AG's office. We recommend this committee to delete the amendments on page 7. We understand that the amendments are technical and non-substantive. However, we would like to bring this to the attention of this committee, because it might be subject to the single-subject rule challenge under Section 14 of the Constitution.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Department of Taxation providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. The department stands on its comments. I just wanted to add, I don't have an updated revenue estimate for you, but this bill was brought up in 2023. And for general fund impact, then the estimated or expected revenue loss was $1 million to 1.1 million, so that should give you a good reasonable estimate of what this bill would be.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom, Tom Yamachika. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We wanted to point out that the G E T exemption enacted last year, Effective 1126, exempts healthcare-related goods or services purchased under Medicare, Medicaid, or TRICARE. So this will probably pick up a lot of the devices that are addressed in this bill. And this bill is, seems to be, have an exemption validity of only 18 months. 12 of those would be after 1126. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Eleanor McDonald in support. Next, we have Peter Fritz in support. Peter, are you present on Zoom? Please proceed.
I was a young man when this bill was first written by me and submitted to legislature, and that happened to be at the same time as we had the great meltdown in the stock market. So I didn't bring it along until later. However, I've revised the bill over the years, and this bill does something that's very important. I'm an old man now. Medicare does not pay for my hearing aids. I pay for them personally. And if you can reduce the cost of my purchasing a hearing aid, it's certainly something that I feel is a good objective, and for some of the same reasons that I mentioned in the earlier, my earlier testimony on the prior bill. Having hearing aids is good for medical care, prevents injuries and other types of accidents. And so from that standpoint, this is a bill that helps to make hearing aids more affordable and has additional health benefits by making them available to more people by lowering the cost. So yes, before I die, I hope that the legislature will pass this bill, or at least some version of it. And I might add with one little bit of humor, there was an elderly gentleman who purchased hearing aids and come back for a recall visit to the doctor. And the doctor says, "What does your new family think of your hearing aids?" He goes, "I haven't told them." He goes, "Why?" He goes, "I've changed my will three times since I got them." So it is a positive bill. I don't know what its new cost is. I'd like to see tax research and planning come up with a revised estimate, but the benefits can't be ignored beyond just merely the making hearing aids less expensive. So I thank you for the opportunity to testify. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Oh, yes, and I also made a change to the definition of hearing aids, so that they're hearing aids that are brought by prescription. I don't want some parent going in and buying a set of AirPods that may qualify as over-the-counter hearing aids and saying, "My kid needs them," which may happen 20 years down the road if they listen to the music too loud. But I think it should be by, if the bill limits, the change that I proposed limits the...
Peter, you're over your two minutes already, so thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for your discretion.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Sheri Shimizu in support. Next, we have Stephan or Stephen LaRacuenta in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1495? Rick, come on up.
Thank you again, Senators. So I'm going to apologize, I didn't get a testimony, and I was at Camp Erdman with Riley Rotary Youth Leadership Awards this weekend.
Slow down, that's why we got two minutes.
So Rotary Youth... I'll slow down. I was at Camp Erdman this weekend where I was offline, so that's why I came in to do testimony here in person. So I'm in support of this bill, strongly in support. I think anything to do, anything doing with cutting cost of living here is important, but especially with the importance of hearing aids and helping people improve their quality of life, anything that would help. Folks will talk about over-the-counter. I'm going to share just a brief story. Our first hearing aid for my mother, my brothers purchased online, ordered it. My mother tells me she was crossing the street, a friend, Janine, honked her horn, blew out her left ear. She was now deaf in the left ear. She could only hear in the right ear after that. The over-the-counters are not monitored. They work okay, I'm told, for folks with moderate kind of issues. She had severe issue. Everybody kept telling her, "Turn it up, turn it up." She said, "I had it all the way up. It was, it was actually, I could hear it, you know, I know I had it all the way up." And then boom, no more hearing. We really do need to have it covered. I'm going to just share one more, just real fast. I worked very closely with an owner of a hearing aid company here for many years, as you know, Senator Benoit Chouyere. He's given me a lot of information. He's actually resigned his position because of integrity and the cost of hearing aids being astronomical. He still can't share with me actually all the information. After he's passed all the "do not compete" stuff, I'll hear more information, but this is an industry that's making a fortune. It's not just the insurance companies, it's the hearing aid companies as well. I'll just go that far for now, and support anything we can do to cut the cost would be helpful.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1495? Come on up.
Good morning again. Elizabeth Pearson with the Disability and Communication Access Board, testifying on behalf of our Executive Director Kirby Shaw. We are also in support of this measure, and we would like to also make the recommendation to define hearing aids as prescription hearing aids, so that it is properly inclusive.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1495? Members, any questions? Seeing none. We're going to recess for decision-making for these three bills, since we have quorum, and that way we could release the Deaf Blind Task Force people, in case they don't want to stick around. Okay, recess. Recalling the 1 o'clock calendar for Health and Human Services, decision-making on these three bills, Deaf Blind Task Force bills. For SB 1419, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. The PEC amendment suggests for clarity and consistency, and we are going to change the appropriation fiscal years to 2025 to 2026 and 2026 to 2027. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Voting on Senate Bill 1419, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Hashimoto, aye. Senator Keo Kaloli is excused. Senator Cumbella?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So for 1494, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We're going to require the health insurance, instead of mandatory coverage, we are going to amend it to be an optional coverage, similar to that of vision and dental. And for the mandatory coverage, we are going to ask for sunrise analysis for coverage of prescription hearing aids. In the committee report, we will request the auditor to complete the sunrise analysis despite requests by the Kukuna Caucus or any singular senator requesting that such analysis end. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Pass with amendments. Okay, Chair, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on Senate Bill 1494, recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Senator Keo Kaloli. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Thank you very much. So for SB 1495, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We are going to accept the Attorney General's proposed deletion because of the subject matter issue and technical amendments as necessary for clarity and consistency. We are also going to put in a defective date. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Oh, and in the committee report, we are also going to note Department of Taxation's, not proposal, but what do you call it? Estimate of a $1.1 million fiscal impact. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote, pass with amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. Voting on Senate Bill 1495, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. We're going to excuse the absence of Senator Keo Kaloli. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to continue on with the calendar. We have a lengthy calendar, so we're back to one minute, and we will excuse the ALS interpreter. Thank you very much. Okay, first up, SB 1421 relating to medical records. Department of Health in support.
Senator Mike, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, what did I issue upon the House and the Senate as part of our testimony? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Queens Health Systems, J.C. McCullinick in support.
Chair, Senator testimony, strong support. Thank you.
Anybody else testifying on SB 1421? Members, any questions? So Department of Health, I have a question, or could you come on up? So basically, my concern is solo practice doctor dies. What happens to the records?
They are encouraged to call, required to call the Department of Health to approve of their disposition of the medical records, but we don't have any record of that happening, so we're not sure what they do. But with the advent of the electronic medical records, there is preservation systems involved.
You assume that they have electronic records, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a big concern, because I'm in the state bar, and when the solo practice attorney decides to retire, there is a transfer procedure. The way you folks have it is it just ends, those records disappear.
Let me just, Lauren Kim, Department of Health, let me add in that to participate in Medicare, the federal government requires healthcare providers to be, to have an electronic medical record that is capable of interoperability, or they get penalized in their reimbursement. So to the extent that a solo practice provider accepts Medicare, which is probably all of them, unless you're a plastic surgeon or something, they should be on a medical record.
Do you folks have any problems with me requiring the practitioner to also just send the medical records back to the patient at their last known address?
I don't think the department would have a position on that, but that would be burdensome on the provider.
Well, it's either that or the patient, because as a solo practice attorney, I know I've had problems scrambling to find those medical records.
So I, it may be possible to require a provider, a physician, to notify their patients of the closure of the practice and educate them on their procedures for collecting their medical records.
Okay.
But that's outside of DOH's scope. That's probably Chapter 4 or 5 or something. And does not cover if a solo practitioner just suddenly dies unexpectedly passes and has to close their practice. But if it's a planned practice, an idea may be to require disclosure to their patient panel that they will be retiring, no one's taking over.
So, okay, the bill itself doesn't require Department of Health to do this.
No.
But we can require, according to the statute you provided, the healthcare provider or healthcare provider's successor, which means the practitioner can be required to provide such medical records to the patient at their last known address.
That's a recommendation, yeah.
Okay, so you folks won't have any problems so long as Department of Health isn't required to enforce it?
Well, I just don't think the department would add any value.
You do? Well, okay, then, I would prefer to just defer it, frankly, because there needs to be a way for a patient to get their records. And if we just allow for your bill to pass, there is no way, unless they're already a Medicare provider. So I'm giving you an out, and you're telling me no.
No, I'm agreeing with you. When we submit an amendment, that we think will make it more workable.
Okay, thank you.
So please do not for the bill, and consider accepting our amendments.
And the Chair's proposed amendment, will you folks accept that?
Which is to require the successor...
The provider or the successor to provide the medical records to the patient at their last known address.
We do not oppose it.
Thank you. Anybody, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Members, moving on, SB 1423. Excuse me, 1422. We did that one. Oh, vital records, sorry.
Yeah, so SB 1422. The department stands on its testimony, but I would like to highlight two things.
Support.
A number, support, strong support, thank you. A number, support, strong support, thank you. This special fund was found by the auditor to not meet the criteria for a special fund. So that's the, that's the primary reason we are asking for its repeal. However, we are asking for the deposits that would otherwise have gone into the special fund to go into the Vital Statistics Improvement Special Fund. That is the fund that allows the Vital Records Office to buy postage and postage just went up recently, buy paper, buy printer toner so that we can issue these certificates. Currently.
There's nobody opposing your bill. Anything else?
Nope.
We've got 20 other bills to be here.
We stand as strong support, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1422? Okay, the more you talk, Lauren, the more I'm going to defer. Okay, SB 1423 relating to amending section 323D-54 Hawaii Vice Statute to exempt Department of Health and Certificate of Need requirements. First up, Department of Health in support.
Senator, in strong support, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jacob Wainick in support. Ted Kafalas in support. Anybody else testifying? SB 1423. Okay, come on up, Dr. Lewin.
Aloha, Senator Zandwe, Senator Cora, Vice Chair Aquino, and Senators Favella and Hashimoto. I don't know what happened to our testimony, we thought we uploaded it. We are in support of this bill, which may surprise you because Shipta, Shipta very rarely seems to agree to any changes in our statutes. But we think this bill makes sense. It is, Daryl Shutter, who is next to me here, is the, is the man who runs the regulatory division and is our expert in this area. We have, we align our goals with the Department of Health. Regularly we confer on facility issues. There really is, the CON process for Department of Health facilities has proven unnecessary. One caveat, though. We don't think this should exempt the, from CON requirements of the grantees from DOH who are providing other services external to them. So for, for those outside, we think they should still be subject to this. So mahalo for that.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1423? Stick around. Members, any questions? Stick around, Dr. Lewin. Okay, I have a question. So last session, we talked about certificate of need, one of my bills. And do you have any, and at that time, we amended the removal of certificate of need requirements. But we've limited it to dialysis and psychiatric services. Do you have any problems amending this bill, not only for grantees of Department of Health, but also for dialysis and behavioral health psychiatric services?
I would defer to Daryl Shutter on this based on public testimony history with respect to those services. Daryl, do you comment?
Sure. I, I don't think we would oppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, moving on. 1424 relating to credentialing of healthcare providers. First up, Department of Health in support. Thank you. Eric Abbe, Hawaii Primary Care Association in support. HMSA providing comments. Jacob Wainick in support. Leah Minton in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1424? Seeing none, moving on. Members, any questions? Sorry. Okay, seeing none, moving on. SB 1425, State Emergency Medical Service Committee. We have no testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your program of.
It's a Department of Health priority, but no testimony.
Yeah, there was, there was a last-minute change up here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Why don't you summarize it really fast considering you did not submit testimony?
Lauren Kim, DOH, this reduces quorum requirements for a committee that advises our emergency medical systems.
Why do you need a quorum change?
We, all of the committee members are active first responders. And so when duty calls, they just can't make our meeting. It's 21 members, quorum is really rough. And so reducing the number, we believe, will allow this meeting to occur more frequently and as planned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, members, okay.
Thank you, Chair. So you know, because you said that with quorum, unless it's first responders or somebody to the point that they can't make the meetings, do you guys have anything in place that if they miss two, three consecutive, that they get replaced on the board?
I don't think there is that provision. It's really difficult to get people to serve. And we wouldn't want to discourage people from being on this. It does take time. We do need all voices represented, but I don't believe that there is a mechanism where if they miss three in a row, then they're replaced.
So besides the first responders, how successful you guys have been in making quorum?
It's been challenging the last several years. There have been several meetings that we were unable to call because again, you have to, it's a 21-member committee. The room is full of people in, you know, fire, fire uniforms, ambulance uniforms. So these are frontline folks and frontline folks. And like I said, when duty calls, finding quorum has been extremely difficult. So we're just trying different ways to make sure that this important committee can meet.
What is the ratio?
The ratio of?
Ratio of first responders and responders.
Overwhelmingly first responders, so physicians, firefighters, EMTs, mobile intensive care technicians, federal fire. So it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty representative sample of the professional EMS community.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. SB 1426 relating to emergency medical services. First up, we have Department of Health in support. Elizabeth Ignatia, Hawaii Medical Association in support. Jay Lim, American Medical Response in support. Mark Endy providing comments. Chris Rose in support. Douglas Van Gunma, American Medical Response in support. Edward Chu for Hawaii Health Services Corporation in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1426? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on. SB 1431 relating to viral hepatitis. First up, Department of Health in support.
Department of Health stands on its testimony in support and we're available for questions.
Okay, Holly Kessler, Hawaii Public Health Association in support. Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, Nikos Leverens in support. Nikos, I see Heather Lusk.
Yes, actually, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Heather Lusk with Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. I'm also co-chair of Hep Free Hawaii. In short, we realize these resources are much stretched during this time. There has never been a large appropriation for hepatitis. For the Department of Health, the community strongly supports this. We have a roadmap called Hep Free 2030 that will allow these dollars to hit the ground quickly with over 100 partners supporting this effort. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have 10 other individuals, all in support, no one in opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1431? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Department of Health?
Yeah.
Please. Yes, so how will the Department of Health make sure that hepatitis prevention programs, you know, reach out to at-risk communities in Hawaii, in particular the underserved population?
Thank you, Senator Favella. So right now, the Department of Health with very little, a small amount of resources in terms of federal positions and savings in staff, it's end-of-year state funds. We've done a number of projects across the state in all counties. And certainly in terms of hepatitis reaching those, those communities is, is a priority.
The only reason why I bring that up is because a lot of, all my family members, they never know, they never been to hospital and it was too late already.
That's right.
They live, everything, this is all gone. I just wanted to see, majority of the people that I encountered that have this issue is native Hawaiians. I just wanted to figure that out. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? So I do, Department of Health. And I know Heather Lusk is on the line and she made China. We had an informational briefing last session on Hep Free Hawaii. And at that time, we were told no appropriation was going to be requested for the Hep Free goal. So what changed?
So I believe that in that meeting, we weren't requesting appropriation at that time, but in that meeting, there were several requests from members for us to propose a number that would allow us to do the kinds of services that we've outlined in the Hep Free Hawaii program. And so that's really, this, this bill is a response to the requests that were, that we heard in that informational briefing.
Okay, so that means like the outreach that Senator Favella was talking about.
And, and.
And frankly, I was shocked that no appropriation was being requested when you guys are going forward, so.
I think we weren't, we weren't prepared for, for that question in an informational briefing. But we, the, the projects that we have funded have included things like community health centers, having some extra staff time to review their medical records, to identify candidates for hepatitis testing, for treatment. We have had patients go through that and be cured of hepatitis C. So there's really just a lot of really exciting potential that we think a hepatitis prevention program could really pay off in terms of reduced morbidity, mortality, and new infections.
No, and I agree. I mean, the informational briefing was very elucidating. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, members, moving on. 1433 relating to harm reduction. First up, we have Department of Health in support.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Senate members of the committee. Tim McCormick with the Communicable Disease and Public Health Nursing Division of the Department of Health. I'm on, testifying on behalf of Dr. Kenny Fink, Director of Health, in strong support of this bill. You have our written testimony, but I did want to just underscore the importance of permitting need-based syringe access to reduce sharing and reuse to prevent injury and infections. The amendments in this bill are based on model federal legislation and CDC recommendations. Restricting syringe access through one-to-one exchange may seem desirable, but it's less effective than needs-based distribution. Syringe programs reduce improperly discarded syringes in the community and needs-based distribution has not been found to be associated with more improperly discarded syringes. Hawaii Syringe Exchange participants report moderate frequency of sharing and cite lack of access to sterile injection equipment as the reason they share. When people visit an exchange and we cannot provide the sterile equipment they need, we're missing an opportunity to reduce the risk of infections. Thanks.
Okay, next we have Nikos Leverens, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction in support. I see Heather, please proceed.
Yes, thank, thank you so much, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Again, Heather Lusk with Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. We strongly support this bill. While Hawaii was the first state in the country to have statewide access, we have been stuck with the, what we knew at the time was the best practices. This law, as Director McCormick talked about, will align the state's program with best practices. And we can continue to prevent HIV overdose and many other health-related issues. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Thaddeus Pham in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1433? Seeing none, members, any questions? Department of Health, this is an administration bill.
Yes.
However, there is a blank on page 10. And we cannot pass a bill with a blank. It basically says that possession or delivery of used needles or syringes containing residue shall not constitute a drug possession offense for syringe exchange participants within blank months after their last participation.
Yes, so we, there are a number of different ways to approach this and really balancing public health and.
So what, put zero months?
So.
I need to put a number there.
Six, six months would be our recommendation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's what I thought, but go ahead.
Okay.
So what do you, this program, I mean, I understand what is the concept, but what about our houseless, you guys have going, going out to our houseless population and our population that is in need in, again, rural areas? Because that's another reason why they do what they do, even though you guys go out there and educate them, hey, if I'm not getting them, and then we're using somebody else's one, or even when they discard them in the, you know, soda bottles that they tell them to put them in. So I put that down and somebody else will take them because they know more. So I just wanted to know how is the access is going to benefit our community, especially our rural, you know, hard, hard areas?
Yeah. So, so the majority of people, syringe exchange participants are unhoused or unstably housed when they register for the program. So that's very much the population that we're reaching with this program. Just starting last year, we got additional opioid settlement funds to expand syringe exchange, including a more robust presence on the neighbor islands. So we're really working on that. This bill, the, really the difficulty in this kind of a program is getting people to trust the program and getting people to attend the program. The, the issue that we have with the one-for-one is we're able to get people there to exchange. We've, they're doing what they need to do to try to protect their health and we're not able to provide the number of syringes that they need to ensure that they have a sterile one for each use.
The only reason why I ask is in the area where my daughter and Senator live, I give, I give people rights. I, I know she ain't picking somebody up, it's far, everything is far in Hilo. But I noticed the population that lives by shower, more closest to the ocean area, they have difficult time. So they are sharing in that areas, but the thing about trust, it goes both ways. Reason why you know trust, again, we know it's an exemption that you give us the needle, you're not going to get arrested. But how are you guys educating the population that we're just talking about now that you can trust us, we're not setting you up, you're not going to get arrested? How can we relay that to people that right now going to give three needles to her, you know, so she can go exchange them? But I'm not getting part of them because maybe I give them a felon or I give one warrant out for me, so I'm not going to come, even though I should come for myself and advocate for myself. How can we get that out to them? People that have warrants or might be in trouble with the law, that to please come to us regardless of the fact, you're not going to get in trouble, you don't get arrested. It's, it's amnesty thing that you come because of public health. And it's really important to get that across.
So, so it, it takes time to build that trust. The, the state funding for syringe exchange has been flat for decades. And with the additional opioid settlement funding, we've been able to increase staffing. So in the neighbor islands, on the Big Island, we had one position before. And now we've subcontracted, our, the provider has subcontracted with additional agency. So there's, there's more presence there, but that still takes some time. And, and certainly one of the important factors is for us to really collaborate closely with law enforcement so that they give some grace to the program so that, that people know that they can come to the program and not risk arrest for possession. And again, that's why the provision in here related to residue is so critical. People need to be able to bring the syringe back to the program and not be afraid that they're going to be charged with drug possession. Otherwise, they're, they're incentivized to just throw it on the ground as quickly as possible.
The only reason why I say this, it's okay in Hilo town because it's saturated and more accessibility. But in Puna, Keau area like that, it's not. We see them at Arkeland, Arkeland, is it Arkeland? Or whatever, we see, we see them around there and so.
You're talking about my district, Senator Favella, so.
No, I love your district, don't get me wrong.
Let's, okay, be careful about the time, yeah, because we've got more bills.
I'm just saying because they're the ones that I encounter at certain areas and talk to them and there is a need.
Okay, so Senator Favella apparently knows that population there than I do because I don't see this, all of these needles. But go ahead.
Just talking to them.
The participants.
Yeah, the participants.
I will say that the vast majority of the syringe exchange services are, are provided through mobile, mobile use, mobile vans and cars. So we are getting out into those communities. And Heather, Heather Lusk can probably give better firsthand response to what that's like on the ground.
And frankly, we've had this, we've had this syringe exchange for over, over 20 years now. So the education has already been out there. So any, any other questions? Okay, Senator Aquino.
Okay, in various parts of the bill, it mentions authorized objects. What are authorized objects? Because on section two, authorized objects may include but are not limited to cookers, cottons, or ties. I'm not quite sure what, I don't know if that's certain lingo. For some of us, not really sure what that is.
Thank you for the question. So authorized objects, so right now, the only thing that's protected is, is this, is syringes and needles at the exchange. But we know that hepatitis C in particular, it can be transmitted through cottons, which are little pieces of cotton that people use to filter their drugs to draw it up in a syringe. Cookers, kind of a bottle-cap device that they. Cookers, kind of a bottle cap device that they use to melt drugs to, to be able to inject it. All those things can then, can transmit hepatitis C. So right now, there's no protection for the syringe exchange program to provide those. And we think it's really important that the program be able to provide those to those people who are coming to the program for syringes and needles. And the, the provision, right, right now, the way the bill is written, that, that those authorized objects would be identified through the Health Department in a rulemaking process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Senator Kio Kalu.
So just to clarify, the intent of the term authorized objects are objects that are associated with the use of syringe-based, injection-based substances?
It would be for what, what, things that are considered drug paraphernalia, whether.
Like pipes?
That would, I mean, that, that is something that, you know, might, maybe should be considered. And, and the reason I say that is that there are programs that have been successful in getting people to smoke instead of injecting. And so the, the risk of a bloodborne pathogen is much less if they're smoking rather than injecting. But that's why that, what those exactly would be, it, we identified a administrative rulemaking process so that there is public input and a process for deciding what those things are.
Okay, and I'd like senators to know that in 2017, we passed my decriminalization of drug paraphernalia possession bill. So this is just in addition to that. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, moving on. SB 1434 relating to universal immunization funding program. First up, Department of Health in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee for this opportunity to testify. I'm Sarah Kemble, state epidemiologist, testifying on behalf of the Director of Health, Dr. Kenneth Fink. You have our written testimony. I just wanted to highlight a few points about this bill. The primary intent is to reduce barriers for patients to access needed immunizations by reducing burden for healthcare providers. This is a system that already exists in 11 other states, and it is a vaccine funding program, not a mandate. And I, it is really leveraging economies of scale so that we leverage lower purchasing prices available to the DOH in order to provide vaccines at lower cost. And those cost savings pay for the program. So the savings are for not, this is really the manufacturers that are fronting that cost difference rather than insurers or healthcare providers. And finally, we are offering an amendment in light of federal developments that concern us to one of the definitions in the bill. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Jacob Weinach in support. Tim Heiki in support. Alika Valdez, Hawaii Democratic Party in support. Maya Maxim, Hawaii Chapter of American Academy Pediatrics in support. Dr. Cassandra Simonson in support. Tammy Machika, Dr., hold on, Dr. Cassandra, are you present? Please.
I am. Hi, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee. My name is Dr. Cassandra Simonson. I'm a pediatrician in Maui, where I have worked with the underserved native Hawaiian keiki for over 10 years. I'm speaking today on my own behalf in strong support of SB 1434 to establish an immunization funding program. I support it because I do not want to see any keiki sickened or worse die from a preventable infection. Given the unknown priorities of the federal administration, it is imperative that Hawaii must shore up our public health defense and secure our own supply of immunizations. We have already seen whooping cough outbreaks, and we are facing a high risk of more outbreaks due to lower and lower rates of immunization. In many areas of Maui, only around 35% of keiki under 2 are fully immunized. Our state was nearly crippled by COVID and would most certainly be crippled by a measles outbreak. Think of the hit to tourism. Maui has no ICU beds for children, and unlike all outer islands, we rely on transport to Oahu. Please support this bill before you, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. I see Tammy Machika, you are next, providing comments for Tax Foundation. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tammy Machika from Tax Foundation.
Could you increase your volume, Tom?
Thank you very much. Is this better?
Yes, slightly better.
Now, we understand the program, but we question the funding mechanism. The, the funding mechanism that's set up in this bill is basically a new fee on healthcare insurers, on health plans and so forth. So it'll drive up the cost of healthcare because these people are, are not going to eat the costs. So it's almost the same thing as enacting a tax increase. That being the case, we ought to have a tax increase. We ought to have the funds go through the appropriation process like any other government funding. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Gary Cordieri, Aloha Freedom Coalition in opposition. Gary, are you present?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, next is Maris Kiuna in opposition on Zoom. Maris Kiuna, are you present?
Also not present on Zoom, Chair.
Anella Kialakai in opposition, are you present?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Eric in opposition.
Also not present on Zoom, Chair.
Next, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay, 40, 80, another 20, 100, 30, 130. Trenton Vancho Jack in opposition on Zoom. Are you present, Trenton?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, we have approximately 170 people all in opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1434? Come on up.
Aloha, senators. My name is Cheryl. I'm a mom, I'm a grandmother. I'm a retired registered nurse, and I'm a health advocate. 30 years ago, I did transition to more natural, non-toxic healthcare.
Can you say your full name?
Cheryl Toyo Fuku.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am in strong opposition of this funding. It's a universal immunization funding program, and this grievous bill, I just, just bottom line, those constituents and many of our family and friends are very tired, and they're waking up to the vaccine agendas. These agendas have been imposed, they've been required for many of us in the past, and we will no longer tolerate further funding to such agendas that are really not in the best interest of Hawaii. We have been shocked, we've been saddened, we've been outraged to research what immunizations or vaccines are doing in the bloodstream and in the bodies of our keiki and ohana. In addition to vaccines causing death, brain damage, crippling diseases, neurological disorders, and other physical problems.
Ms. Toyo Fuku, could you wrap it up?
Sure. One minute is very short, but there are numerous significant scientifically documented research linking vaccines to autism. And we're just requesting, please do your own diligent research because hear the cry of the people, of our hearts, to take the time to learn what vaccines are doing. We have very qualified health professionals to help you with that also, and I have handouts to distribute.
This is not a mandate, so thank you.
I understand it's not a mandate.
Thank you.
Senator Joy.
There's another bill that's a mandate, but not this one.
Yes, but this is the funding for the universal immunization purchasing. So that's part of funding for the immunization. So our hearts are to just make our keiki more healthy with diet and nutrition and other things. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, that's, that was a lot of, okay. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1434? Okay, come on up.
Aloha, my name is Kim Cordery. That was my husband. He said that you didn't send him a link, I'm not sure.
Okay, sorry, but go ahead.
I just, I am strongly opposed to this bill as well, the funding portion of it. I don't think that taxpayers should be responsible for funding immunizations. I'm, just like Cheryl, I am, I am actually, I don't believe in vaccines. I think they do more harm than good. And also, I don't, I think it's, it's not good that none of the, that they're not liable, that the people that are going to be prescribing these things are not liable. So that is a concern as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1434? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, moving on. Next up, SB 1447 relating to administrative orders. First up, we have Department of Health in support. Okay, please proceed, Department of Health.
Hi, thank you, Chair and Vice Chairs, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Paula Serio. I am the Chief for the Office of Healthcare Assurance for the Department of Health. The department stands on its testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1447? Members, any questions? For SB 1448, emergency appropriation to Department of Health for the construction defect remediation Hawaii State Hospital. First up, Department of Health in support.
Aloha, Chair and Committee. I'm Mark Lynn Scott. I'm the hospital administrator at Hawaii State Hospital. We strongly support this bill, and we rest and stand on our written testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Budget and Finance in support. Next up, Keith Reagan of DAGS in support. DAGS? Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on 1448? Members, any questions? So I have a question of DAGS, I guess, or, and Department of Health, why don't you come on up here? This is a lot of money for something that we had funded a lot of money for to construct. So what are your folks' plans on, if, we gotta pass this, so. But what are you folks' plans about trying to get the money back from the contractor?
Well, at this point, you know, we're still in the early stages, and we're considering all remedies and what possibilities there may be to.
Have you guys, I mean, it's a new building.
Yes.
And you folks are asking $8 million to fix a new building. So when you mean explore the avenues, have you just asked the contractor to go fix what they screwed up?
Yes, yes.
And what happened? They're not.
They have been attempting to, but I think at this stage, you know, we're considering our options.
So what's the $8 million for if the contractor is fixing it?
Well, as you know, part of the $8 million is for legal fees, so.
So you guys are planning on it?
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. What is the name of the contractor?
Hansel Phelps.
Thank you.
So it's a design build contract, by the way.
Okay, because that was a lot of money to put up. Okay, and two-thirds of it is for repair. So are you guys thinking about hiring another contractor to fix what that first contractor did?
Again, we're just still considering all options.
All options, okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on. SB 1520, paternity proceedings. First up, judiciary in support. Daniel Hugo, Department of Prosecuting Attorney for the City and County of Honolulu in support. Angelina Mercado, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support. Angelina, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. First of all, thank you very much for hearing this measure in your committee today. We're grateful for your attention to this matter. We stand on our written testimony and are available to you for any questions you may have about this measure. Aloha.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Derek Carlin in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1520? Members, any questions? Members, do we need to recess for decision-making? Are you guys ready? Okay, we're ready to proceed then. Okay, moving on. So first up. Recess, recess for decision. Recalling 1 o'clock calendar for Health and Human Services. First up, SB 1421, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We are going to add to the very end the phrase, "and return to patient at her or his last known address." Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on Senate Bill 1421, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for SB 1422, repealing the special fund. Chair's going to pass this with technical amendments needed for clarity and consistency. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill 1422, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for SB 1423, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to add two paragraphs, 18 chronic renal dialysis centers, and a second paragraph, psychiatric or behavioral health services, and tech amendments needed for clarity and consistency. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1423, recommendation of the Chair's to pass as a Senate draft one. Any, noting that everyone's here, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for SB 1424, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical amendments and a defect date of 12/31/2050. And we're going to note in the criminal, in the committee report, the $250,000 request for deappropriation. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1424, recommendation is to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for SB 1425, Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on Senate Bill 1425, recommendation of the Chair's to pass as is. Noting all members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For SB 1426, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We're going to change the fiscal year to 2025 to 2026, and 2026 to 2027. Technical and non-substantive amendments needed for clarity and consistency. And we're going to add a defect date to December 31, 2050. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1426, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, Chair's, on SB 1431, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical non-substantive amendments needed for clarity and consistency. We're going to note in the committee report, the $545,000 request by Department of Health and the positions requested by Department of Health. And we're also going to add a defective date of December 31, 2050. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1431, recommendation is to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for SB 1433, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We're going to insert the number six on page 10, line five. That's the sixth one. And we're also going to limit, um. The authorized objects stated therein, "to only such items incidental to syringe exchange." Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1433, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations, any nulls? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for SB 1431, 1434, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical amendments. with technical amendments and Department of Health amendments. We're going to insert a new section per Department of Health, add a defective date to continue the conversation to December 31, 2050. And we're going to insert in the committee report the $934,000 for appropriation requested. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1434, recommendation of the Chair to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for SB 1447, Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1447, recommendation of the Chair to pass as is. All members are present, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, for SB 1448, emergency appropriation. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with a budget and finance proposed amendment. We're going to insert a new section declaring that the general fund appropriation expenditure, which basically refers to a new section for the expenditure ceiling for fiscal year '24, '25 being exceeded. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1448, recommendation of the Chair to pass with amendments. All members are present, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, we've done 1494 and 1495. Okay, last bill, SB 1520, Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill 1520, recommendation of the Chair to pass is unamended. All members are present, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.